We'll call the meeting to order. If you'd please stand as we cite the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone for coming this evening. We have an appointment to consider, and that is to appoint David E. Parker to the Tree Board for a two-year term. His application was in the packet of information, so I'd make a motion then that we can appoint David E. Parker to the Tree Board for a two-year term.
Second?
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor then, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda.
Mayor.
Yes.
Item G, there is a change on the date and time to October 12th from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m.
Seven, from, say it again, from nine?
7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., October 12th on item G.
Okay.
Seven to nine.
Yes.
That's what mine says, so she must have fixed that one.
That's good.
Okay?
I'm good. You're special.
Yeah, I guess. So with that, are there any comments from my colleagues here on the adoption of the consent agenda? This one here, okay, that's, there we go, this down there.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Senator?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Items A through H then would be what we'd approve on the consent agenda. Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through H?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. By the way, we do have an extra item on the agenda for this evening, which is to consider requests from Bryan Williams from the city with, to participate in a cost to extend improvements to the north Peter Pan Road beyond Lubbock Hills North entrance. So that'll be an extra item that we'll put there at the very end. We have public hearings next. Public hearing regarding the proposed loan in an amount not to exceed $3,100,000 to be taken by the city from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund, and after the conclusion of the hearing, adopting a resolution authorizing completion of the loan application and the execution and delivery of the loan documents. I would call this hearing, the hearing is now open. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the city is considering applying for a loan for 3.1 million for various wastewater improvement projects. Projects include the second phase of Basin 5, the lakeside lift station, Basin 2, INI abatement, and those total to approximately 3.1 million. The current interest rate for the loan is 2.3 percent. The maximum term of the loan is 20 years. The annual debt payment would be approximately $195,000 a year. Typically, KDHE takes that in two payments. In the past, I think there was an amortization schedule around that showed 40 payments, but it's actually two payments a year. So I think that led to some confusion that it may have been a 40-year term, but it's it's not.
Spaced six months apart?
Yes.
Semi-annually?
Yes. The maximum term that they'll allow is 20. They will allow a shorter term if the city desires that. And this, to retire the debt if it's all comes from a rate increase, it would be approximately $4.50 per user to fund that, but that is also a commission decision. So basically, for every million borrowed, create roughly to a dollar fifty per month per user for debt retirement. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from the public as a whole? Questions from the commission?
Is it set at 20 years or can it be reduced?
Can be shorter, but not longer.
Shorter, okay.
And if you choose to proceed with the process, we apply for the loan, at the end of the process, there'll be a loan agreement that the commission and the city manager and city attorney would review, and those terms can be finalized.
So no reason to make that decision tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Are we looking at this like a line of credit right now?
You can consider it that. They basically want to know what projects you have and estimates for them for the 3.1 million. They have been pretty open to modifying that to do other projects, though. Yeah, they really won't give you the loan without having an idea of what you're spending it for, and we have documented that. But can you change, change any of these projects? You could, yes.
Yes. I was wondering, you know, looking at 20 years extending it out, of course, where we're doing collection line replacement, we're definitely looking at a longer life than 20-year, but when you look at some of the lift stations, are we looking at a product that has a 20-year life? Why borrow money for 20 years if it's got a 10-year life?
Yeah, typically, the bulk, the type of lift station that would be going in is a submersible, duplex submersible station. Most of that cost will be a 50-year life. The pumps, of course, would have less, probably less than 20-year, but the structure itself would actually have longer. So it's hard to, it is hard to apply just a blanket design life to the lift station, but the guts of that would have a 50-year or more life.
So this is similar to the Bertie Lift Station where we actually replace the whole?
Yes.
The whole well, not just pumps or not just?
Yes.
Lines intake and discharge, but we replace?
Yeah, an antiquated-type design is the metal structure in the ground that houses the pumps, and then a separate wet well, that's, those don't go, those aren't done anymore, just, it's not a good idea to bury a metal can and expect that to last for 50 years.
So the big project that we have completed recently was the southeast lift station, which is the big one.
Correct.
And that's for how long? That, I mean, you had mentioned 50 years or just in?
Yeah, and the bulk of that, that structure would, and that cost would have a 50-year life. You know, the electrical components and the pump would not, but a lot of that was a structure and a building that was built. Those would have a longer, longer life.
So it'd be 30 years to the good in a sense, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's, I mean, that's good, obviously. So if finances were such that we had the cash to pay it down quicker, would that be an option too without penalty?
Yes. Yes, that is written in the loan, the common language of the loan, there's no penalty for early payment. And the city has done that in the past, I think it was on a water project, a water tower, actually. Depending on how bonds are, sometimes conventional bonding might, may be cheaper than the loan, and a bondsman actually came and offered to buy the city's debt.
Really?
Basically, yes, and that has happened before. You get into a strange cycle and that could happen, so.
Surely it wasn't this low an interest rate, though?
No.
That's, that's.
No. That's barely keeping up with inflation.
Yeah.
It is. So the $4.50, that was derived, that number came from?
That's a number that he's worked with, but we have incorporated these payments into the budget.
Okay.
So with the rates that you're going to be seeing soon and what was presented in the budget has already incorporated that in there.
Okay.
It's a requirement of the public hearing to discuss how that debt may impact the rates, so.
Okay.
On the Basin 2 INI abatement, in your email clarifying that, you mentioned that there was like 400,000 for video of the line. If, and you addressed that that's the second worst basin, I believe, compared to Basin 5. But if the plan would be to replace all main collectors, then why would you want to do a video of it? What's the value of doing a video of the existing line when you're going to replace it all?
Well, we're not, we're not replacing all the main collectors. We're target, basically targeting the entire collection system and picking the worst spots.
So you'll use the video to define the scope of your work?
That's exactly right.
Actually, construction.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Because some of it looked like it was going to video everything, and it was leading towards a total replacement. I think you mentioned it was vitrified clay lines a lot of times, and those are, as you said, a lot of INI coming through those systems.
That's exactly right. The, that's expensive, the closed caption TV inspection, but it's necessary, or you're just, you could spend millions and not target the right spot, basically, without spending that 400,000.
Sean, if we move forward with this, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for the loan and then implementing these three projects?
Well, it's still, it would still take two to three months to go through the application process. There's an environmental review that has to happen and all that good stuff, so you're really looking at two to three months at the earliest.
For the loan? Then suppose we get the loan. What about these three projects?
The design of the lakeside lift station and Basin 5, that's already occurred, and that's been approved by KDHE, so those could be bid immediately. And then the other projects would have to, you'd have to go through the design process.
And how about construction?
The, you're probably talking really six months construction period for each of those two projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Other questions?
No, not to Sean. I think that was my question.
There's no questions from the public then? All right, I'll close the hearing. We then could adopt, have a motion then to adopt the resolution authorizing completion of the loan application and the execution and delivery of the loan documents related to the proposed loan in the amount of $3,100,000 from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund.
I have a question more towards Mike. We see what the projected cost was $4.50 to our sewer rate, the increase, but, you know, our rate study that we had from Lochner, I guess in the end, we really haven't seen a definitive rate study that's going to be for our water rates and our sewer rates to know how this $4.50 is going to impact. I know you've said it's included in the budget, but as far as us as a commission, we have no idea what that is. So where are we going to be in the total with our rate? You know, I think we're, we keep running ahead, but we've never backed up to do, you know, like, a year ago, we were talking about rate study from Lochner. Where's it going to be? Where are we? And, you know, we still haven't seen a rate study to know where our rates are going to be totally.
So with the sewer side of things, that included in the budget a 5% increase of the existing rate, plus the incorporation of the $200,000 at that breakdown within those rates. So that piece of it set. The water rate study, we have pretty well finalized everything. What we are working on right now is putting together a five-year package for that rate so we can bring that to you, which we'll have for you at the next meeting.
So what I hear you saying is the sewer rate is projected to raise just 5%, and that will cover the $4.
The 5% plus incorporating that $4.50 in there.
So you're going to raise it 5% and then add $4.50 on that figure?
Yes.
Which, I guess we'd each have to look at our sewer rate to determine what that increase?
Yeah, we'll pull it all into that rate, so, I mean, it'll be spread out, but that 4.50, yes, was a figure that was all pulled into that, and I don't remember exactly, going back from the budget, exactly what that amounted to specifically. I'd have to go back and look at the documents, at the example that I showed you of what that increase would be at 4,000 gallons, but it spreads it out across everybody. And keep in mind also that we have the sewer district that's outside of the city limits. They pay a premium on top of that, so there is some changes. Not everybody feels it the exact same way.
Yeah, I think that's, that's where I'm hesitant at this point, that we don't have anything definitive. It's all a lot of assumptions that, knowing where we're going to be, and, you know, even with sewer district number two, we don't know where that's going to end up, to how that's going to affect. I guess we haven't had an update recently, but, you know, I'm just, I guess concerned we keep going without having that information.
What I think even Sean had mentioned, and he can answer this if I'm incorrect on it, making the application is not obligating us to do anything. It's just getting the process started and having that piece of it done.
Yeah, the obligation occurs when you sign the loan document, and even then, you're not obligating you that full amount of the 3.1 million, it's just what you spend out of that, out of that project, but you're not obligating yourselves to anything with this application.
So looking at it as we're submitting the loan, and we'll make the decision later whether to execute the loan or instigate the projects?
So in other words?
Yeah, that's correct.
This gives us the flexibility and the ability then to approve different projects?
Right.
As we go through the loan application or the loan completion process? Is that correct, Sean?
Yeah, you, like Commissioner Preple, you mentioned we have those projects identified for the 3.1 million, but the city can modify those if they wish. KDHE's been pretty flexible with that.
This has just simply given us the opportunity to have access to the 3.1 million.
Correct.
Then we can debate and decide on each of those projects individually?
Yeah.
Assuming we get the loan approved.
And the interest isn't charged until we actually draw down?
Correct.
So is that a fixed interest rate? That was something I was going to ask, and I forgot. Is that 2.3%? Is that a fixed interest rate for the length of the loan?
I believe it is, but I need to double-check that. I believe it's fixed on your loan, but probably honestly, I need to double-check.
Okay.
It is fixed.
It's fixed?
It is.
It's fixed?
I didn't see anything in the loan document that mentioned it was variable.
Yeah, I didn't note it either. I didn't see where it said it was fixed, but if it is variable, it would specifically have to state that, and I didn't see that in there.
No.
Okay. Okay. Then are we ready to proceed with the motion then?
I am.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right, then I'd make a motion, so I have to go through this. I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing completion of the loan application and execution and delivery of the loan documents relating to a proposed loan in an amount not to exceed 3.1 million from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Complete said item. Okay. Items for Commission action. Item A is a presentation of the debt analysis and financial management plan and considering setting public informational hearings.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. As you know, since the City Hall Committee reported out their recommendations, we were tasked to work with a consultant to look at the debt, our debt structure, and how that would come into play over the next 20 to 40 years. And so we've been working with Greg Varenberg from Piper Jaffray. He is here, he's handed out a report and talk about some scenarios on how we might structure our debt and how we pay for it, more importantly, in one scenario. And I'll let Greg talk about that, but this is just one, a couple of scenarios on the way to do that. So I'll turn it over to Greg, and he can go through the presentation.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Greg Varenberg with Piper Jaffray, and we were engaged a few months ago to start working with you on development of a CIP plan, which can be a very valuable planning tool in terms of how you pay for future improvement projects and when you might want to implement those. After we were brought on board to help you start that initial planning, we were given a considerable amount of information by the administration of the city that helped us understand some of the things that you were thinking about. One of those was the feasibility study and master plan that you received in June of this year related to the proposed building improvement projects that may be considered in the city. And when we looked at that project, it really became pretty clear that what, if anything, that you might do with that project has a pretty big impact on how you might finance some of the other improvements in the city. And so we thought we would have the discussion this evening to show you a couple of examples of how you might approach the building improvements in the city. And the purpose of tonight's discussion is not to present a recommendation. This is in no way a recommendation at all. It's just two very basic scenarios of how you might finance a project like that, that then we'll start the discussion with the commission and then potentially carry over into the community to get some feedback as to how or if you move forward with that project and what source of repayment you would have for financing any building projects, if that's something you decide to consider. And then from there, once we have that feedback, I think it'll be a lot more clear, and the outcome or the analysis that we provide to you will be so much more beneficial if we can get that guidance first on the public building projects. So again, the handout this evening is centered around those building projects and also the existing sales tax that you have, and so I'd like to walk you through that if you don't mind. Each of you should have that black-bound handout, and if you'll turn to tab one. Anytime we start developing a draft plan of finance, we start with looking at some of the assumptions or variables that impact that plan of finance. One of those assumptions that we have to build into our analysis would be the interest rate assumptions. And obviously, we've been in a very low interest rate environment. It becomes a little bit difficult to figure out what interest rate do we use for a financing that might be two, three, four, or five years down the road. So we'll look at the historical interest rates for the tax-exempt municipal bond market, look at the trend, where we're at, and oftentimes, what we will do is, especially here in the last probably five or seven years where we've been in a low interest rate environment, we'll use a higher interest rate than what you would be able to sell your bonds at today, just so that if you're doing a financing several years down the road, that we don't have a slight increase in interest rates, now all of a sudden, what you were looking at in 2017 is obsolete because it's a higher interest rate environment. We also then look at, if you have a financing that may be property tax-based, we'll look at your assessed valuation trend and determine what has been the growth rate in the tax base of the city over a number of years and what's reasonable to use moving forward. Knowing, or looking at that historical assessed valuation has been challenging for many communities in Kansas, just because over the last 10 years, we were, a large part of that, we were dealing with challenges in the national economy and the financial markets, and we saw some pressure on assessed valuation for cities throughout Kansas. And so we saw slower-than-normal growth rates for about five, six, seven of the last 10 years. So that, looking back, can be a little misleading, but then looking at just recent years, sometimes it causes us to raise some questions. So here, what we notice is that your average growth rate for the last three years is just under 1%, 0.83%. If you look back five or seven years, it's been relatively flat, but you've had a range of growth or declines ranging from a negative 3.18% to a positive 4.14%. So we'd want to understand that a little better, be careful in terms of any growth rate assumptions we use for assessed valuation if you have a property tax-based financing. We also look at, this really doesn't impact the plan of finance, but looking at your mill levy history sometimes can tell us where you might have a decline in your bond and interest fund that creates some capacity for you, or looking at the historical mill levy sometimes can give us some guidance in terms of whether you have capacity from a property tax perspective, or maybe it's something that it would be a challenge if you use a property tax-based approach for a financing. So we look at the mill levy history as well. So when we get into tab two and tab three, these are the two financing scenarios that we started with. And before I get into the first one, the reason we started with these two scenarios is that working with cities, you know, throughout Kansas in my career, there's really two primary sources of revenue used for the repayment of public building projects. Doesn't mean those are the only two, but it seems like more often than not, cities will choose to use either property tax or sales tax to repay a public building project. Improvements in a utility system, for example, your water, wastewater system, or an electric system, you'll oftentimes use the revenue generated inside of that system. But for public building improvements, we oftentimes start with property tax, sales tax, or oftentimes even a combination of those. So behind tab two, this is the mill levy scenario that we put together as a starting point. And I know this is a spreadsheet with a lot of numbers on there, but the highlights of this start with, we've taken that feasibility study, and just for sake of giving you an example, we used a $16 million construction project. We have financed that initially with temporary notes. Temporary notes are oftentimes used to complete the construction of a project, and then, once the project is complete, you know, the final amount of the improvements, you roll that into a long-term permanent bond issue. We've assumed that you would finance it initially with temporary notes in 2018, and again, we're not suggesting that's the year that you would start the project, just for sake of discussion, and then roll that into a bond issue in 2021 with your first bond payment being in the year 2023. And so we've shown a 20-year repayment schedule in this scenario. We've used an interest rate of 3.65%, not far off of where we would be currently, but still a little bit conservative, like I had mentioned earlier. And we've built in a growth rate in the assessed valuation of 1%. And as you can see from that slide previously, that's something we'd want to take a pretty close look at if you were to consider a property tax scenario and make sure we're not too aggressive in that assumption. That's close to where you've been the last few years, but if you take a longer look back, that's higher than the growth rate you've seen over that five- and seven-year period. But with that, all of those components that I just mentioned in the 20-year repayment, we look at the annual debt service payment that is due for the repayment of the bond, and then we compare that to the assessed valuation or tax base of the city in the year when that payment comes due, and we calculate what the projected mill levy would need to be to repay that $16 million construction project. And as you'll notice, the mill levy that we show here for that 20-year scenario is 20.25 mils. And if you take that mill levy, and just to convert that into a taxpayer cost, median value home in the county is 70,600. I don't think we had any data on median value in the city, but just for sake of discussion, median value in the county, 70,600, and that equates to about $13.70 per month, or about $164.40 per year for that project. And again, that's the property tax-based scenario.
Real quickly, Greg.
Sure.
In your assessment there, behind tab two, in your assessed valuation, you have this, that's column two, you have the assessed valuation, ad valorem tax collection rate at 95%.
Yes.
So those numbers there reflect 95% of the, what would be the, about, the assessed valuation that people would see as a total for the city versus these numbers. that people would see as a total for the city versus these numbers. Is that correct?
We've assumed that, you know, if you levy property taxes, you may have some late property taxes or delinquencies or just simply non-payments. And we've assumed a 5% delinquency that you never recapture. So we're trying to, you know, be a little bit conservative there. If you look at your tax collection rate, you probably, you may have a slightly lower current year collection, but then you have some delinquencies from prior years. So I think if I remember your tax collection percentages, you're probably in that range where what you receive in any given year is, you know, 95% of what you levy. So we didn't want to assume you have 100% collection rate in each year, and then, because if you don't collect 100% and you're counting on that, then you have under-levered and you don't have enough money to make the bond payment, and so you want to build in some delinquency factor in your property tax assumption, so. But again, even that assumption is one that we would want to look at more closely if this is a scenario that either the commission or the community finds is worth exploring further. That answer your question?
Yes, yes, it did.
Okay. So then, kind of shifting over, I had mentioned the two primary options that we oftentimes see for this type of project. Shifting over to the tab three, this is the scenario where we have the sales tax collection or sales tax approach. And just like we do on the property tax approach, we look at the historical trends to determine what's reasonable to use for assumptions moving forward. On sales tax, you know, the primary assumption is, what is the growth rate? What will future collections look like, and how will that change from one year to the next? So we look at your historical sales tax collections, and this page that you're looking at, the left portion of the page is a little bit difficult to follow the trend because it shows the total amount of collections, but you have a change in the tax rate partway through those years. So obviously, if you have a higher collection rate or sales tax rate, you're going to have larger dollar amount of collections. So the right portion of that page is where we take out the impact of a change in the sales tax rate so that we can get a better idea of, based upon just a simple one cent sales tax, what has been the annual change for the city in each of those last years? And so you can see, the sales tax, if you look at the, again, the far right part of that page, the 10-year average has been pretty flat, negative 0.07%, and that includes some of those years where we saw the challenges in the economy. If you look at the five-year average, it has been right at 1%. But the other thing that's interesting to note is when you look at the range of the high and the low, there can be some pretty significant swings from one year to the next. You've had one year that was down 10.16%, and one year, the high end, was up 7.76%. So again, we look at that data to try and figure out what is a reasonable assumption moving forward, and really, it's, this spreadsheet along with feedback from the city and the community helps us figure out, you know, what is happening in the local economy, what's reasonable to assume? Do we build in a growth rate, or do we just simply show a flat or 0% growth rate for sales tax in our financing analysis? So we look at that historical data to help give us a guide. And then the other thing that I would point out here is that the bottom left footnote on that spreadsheet, we've broken out the three components of your local sales tax. You have the 1% general purpose sales tax citywide, you have the 1% educational citywide sales tax, and that expires in 2031 and 2032. And then you have the 1% ADA infrastructure mill levy support sales tax. There's kind of four components to that sales tax, and it expires in the year 2022. When you think about sales tax options, one thing that's important to keep in mind is that Kansas statutes limit the total sales tax to 3%, of which 1% can be general sales tax, and you can have 2% special purpose sales tax. And there have been some changes in the statutes to where any sales tax election that you would consider, if it's a special purpose sales tax, you're limited to a 10-year repayment period or 10-year term for that sales tax. So with that information and looking at the historical data, then we create a financing analysis that is behind tab four, based upon using sales tax to repay that project. And we, to keep the scenarios comparable, we have kept the assumptions pretty close to the same. $16 million construction project financed initially with a temporary note and then rolled into a bond issue in 2021 with your first payment being in the year 2023. And the reason we're showing that is that assumption of your first payment in 2023 and trying to keep these scenarios comparable was really driven by the sales tax option because if you're to take a project to the voters and ask them for permission to continue an existing sales tax, for example, the one that expires in 2022, and then you want to do a financing against that sales tax that's approved by the voters, the first year in which you're going to, you're going to start seeing revenue coming in under that new sales tax roughly 60 to 90 days after the expiration of the existing sales tax that you have. And so that's why trying to match up the payments on a financing to when the sales tax revenue would be coming in, that's why we're showing the payments beginning in 2023. We've kept it as a 20-year repayment on the bond issue. And then you'll notice down there in the bottom left, our sales tax growth rate, we're assuming a 0% growth rate in the sales tax collections, and we're assuming that the sales tax that would be authorized would be a one cent or 1% renewal of the existing 1% that would expire in 2022. So from a sales tax option, it is a little bit different in that a property tax scenario, you're going to look at how much are our bond payments, and then you levy whatever property tax mill levy rate is necessary to generate that amount of money to repay the bonds. A sales tax, you actually have a revenue stream coming in, and then from that revenue stream, you're making your bond payments. So the couple of columns here that I wanted to bring to your attention, the far right column, debt service coverage, we're showing the total amount of sales tax that would be received, and that's shown right in the middle of the spreadsheet under the 1% of total infrastructure sales and use tax revenue. But that coverage shows that the amount of sales tax revenue you have coming in relative to the amount of the bond payment for that $16 million construction project creates a debt service coverage ratio, or the amount of revenue you have compared to the expenditure for debt service. And that coverage then generates excess revenue, the third column from the right. Those are the sales tax dollars that are not needed by the city to make the bond payment. So then you have those sales tax dollars available for any other legally available purpose, and the legally available purpose would be driven by however the ballot question is worded. In other words, if you said, kind of similar to what the sales tax you have outstanding, where it's authorized to make infrastructure improvements and mill levy reduction, if you went back with a similar ballot question where you said, you know, shall the city be authorized to implement a one cent sales tax for infrastructure improvement projects in the city, which would include the building project and mill levy management or property tax reduction, and that sales tax to begin upon expiration of the existing one cent sales tax, then that ballot language would give you the flexibility to determine from those annual excess revenues, how much of that do you use for mill levy management or repayment of outstanding bonds or other capital improvement projects? So you have some flexibility to make that decision of how you would use those sales tax dollars if this is an approach that you take. So that is an overview of the sales tax financing scenario, and then the last part of my discussion kind of ties into the last slide in the handout, the graph here. What we've done is, we've taken that existing 1% sales tax that you're using for ADA improvements, street and sidewalk improvements, building and facility improvements, and then debt service or mill levy support, I think are the components of that existing one cent sales tax. And so we're showing in the years through 2022, you can see the blue portion in the bottom left, that series 2012, 13, and 15, those are some outstanding bonds for which you're using sales tax to make those bond payments to keep the mill levy down or avoid having to levy property taxes to make those bond payments. And then the red category above that in those years through 2022 covers all of those other categories, the mill levy support, the street sidewalk ADA, building facility type of improvements. So then, when you get to the year 2023, the bond payments on those outstanding bonds, the portion shown in blue, they start to decline pretty significantly after 2022, 2023. But we're showing a scenario where you may make a decision that you want to continue using a portion of the sales tax to pay those bond payments for a few years. And then the 2021, that's actually the building-related improvements that I had shared with you, how we would use, we would set up the bond payments to cover the building-related project, the $16 million project, but we set up that repayment schedule in a manner to where we tried to keep the red category as much as we could in each of those years, especially as you're paying down those outstanding bonds, because it's the red category that you would get to use for other improvement projects or mill levy support or in keeping property tax down. So again, I do want to stress that neither of these scenarios is a recommendation, but we felt that at least sharing this with you and then potentially sharing it with the community is a good starting point for, if you decide to move forward with the building projects, what financing options would be worth considering. And I'm sure there's a number of different scenarios that we'll be running an analysis for and sharing with you to show, but hopefully this at least is a good starting point for opening up that discussion, not only with the commission but with the community. And we just wanted to share this with you this evening and then receive some guidance from you, not only on options that you'd like to see and feedback you'd like to give for us, but then in terms of if this was to be taken to the community, if we're headed in the right direction at least for starting that dialogue with the community. So I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions.
Greg, Leonard, questions?
No, not right now.
One thing that occurs to me is the question of online sales. You know, seems like more and more people I talk to are saying, I just shop online.
Sure.
So seems like that could really impact us negatively.
Yeah, and it probably already has. I mean, and I think, if I remember right, the Department of Revenue breaks out the online portion versus the, you know, the local portion, if you will. And so we can look at some of that data and see, you know, what that trend has been, but, you know, especially if you end up with a scenario where you have very tight coverage or not a lot of flexibility, you want to be very careful with those assumptions and not to paint too rosy of a picture, and then all of a sudden you have a shortfall, which then would put pressure on you to raise the property tax or find some other source of revenue to cover that shortfall.
The way it's been explained to me is if somebody in Independence buys something on Amazon, they will pay state sales tax but not local. Is that correct, you know?
I'd want to look into that to make sure I answer that correctly, but I think that sounds right from what we've heard. I just want to confirm that.
And that was, that's a good question, because is that the reason that the sales tax rate held steady throughout, the collection rate held steady throughout this? Was that one of the factors that you used, or what was?
Yeah, this is really a starting point, and it was really a discussion amongst the administration of the city and us, just looking back at the historical trend and trying to figure out, okay, what's a good number to start with? And we ran scenarios at 1% and then decided to scale that back at 0%, you know, primarily from the guidance of the city administration. And if you get to the point where you start thinking, okay, this is something we might be considering, and sales tax is probably the option we would look at, then we'll run a sensitivity analysis and show if you have a major downturn in your sales tax and then a slow growth thereafter, you know, how much can you sustain in terms of a, you know, gradual decline or one sudden decline? And then, you know, if you had a 10% drop and then grew 1% thereafter, you know, what does that do to the plan of finance? Those are the kind of things that we would want you to look at.
That was another question that I brought up, is, was thinking about as a possible scenario would be to somehow or another do a combination mill rate, say like three mils, and the rest with sales, taking a little pressure off sales because it can be so volatile, as you just mentioned.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, and that is a scenario. We actually started running a, some of those scenarios of a combination, and we thought, you know, for a starting discussion, the more scenarios we throw out there, the more confusing it gets, but clearly, a combination of the two is an option. And as I had mentioned, we do have some cities that choose to do that, use sales tax to pay for part and mill levy to pay for part of a project.
Since both of them are basically level or have potential to decline, it's kind of risky to put all your eggs in one basket.
That's true.
That's, a combination could take the slack out of a declining evaluation or declining sales tax and still cover without putting the budget in jeopardy and also then soften the amount of a mill increase on everybody too, because, you know, we just look at one thing raising for this, and like we've discussed earlier, water sewer, all of our raises are more drastic than just that one item. And, but combination would kind of take care of declining sales tax revenue and declining property valuation.
Absolutely, and that's the kind of feedback that we would be looking to get, and we're happy to run those scenarios and show those to you. If you had a certain mill levy that you wanted to target, and we could figure out how much could be paid for inside of that mill levy, and then the balance from sales tax and show you those scenarios, but happy to look at any of those. And the other, I failed to talk about the expiration and renewal of the educational sales tax, but that comes, that expires in 2031 and 2032. And so at some point, you'd have the ability, if it's the desire of the city and the commission, to go to the voters and ask for a renewal of that and change or identify whatever purpose would be necessary. And so that, we haven't, we've only looked at the one cent sales tax, but you also got another one cent that will be coming back available to the city at some point. You know, it's a few years down the road, but it is something to keep in mind.
With the series 2012, 2013, and 2015, our special use sales tax sunsets in 2022, right?
Correct.
So we are going to have to look, one of them goes out, what, to 2031?
Yeah, that's correct. You do have a few years of payment on those outstanding bonds after the expiration of the sales tax, and if you were to not renew the sales tax, then that would force you to look at either a property tax levy or some other source of revenue to repay those three outstanding bonds.
So then, with, with the renewal of the special use sales tax in question, we don't know if it'll be 100% pass or fail.
Right.
Should you be considering at the same time, other options for funding those bonds? Should it not pass?
Yeah, I think that becomes part of our broader CIP analysis, because if that sales tax were to drop off in 2022 and not be renewed, then we would want to build into our analysis of, our CIP analysis, which really is going to show what future projects you have that you you have that you want to consider and pay for, but also the paying off of some of the projects that have been completed but financed through a bond issue. And so if we have bond payments on those three series of bonds that from 2022 or 2023 and thereafter, that you're needing to use property tax or some other internal source of revenue, then that probably cuts into what you have available for other improvement projects. So you can, you can start to see why I made that, the opening comment, that how you might approach a possible building project and renewal of that sales tax has a pretty big impact on some of the other.
How it all works.
Yeah, how it all fits together and what the plan might look like.
And then is, is it possible in looking at scenarios where you've looked at the 16 million all at once to break it into a smaller amount that would give some options to soften the effect should we feel that the sales tax or the property tax wouldn't support that full amount?
Yeah, and that is getting into a level of detail that we're not quite at at this point, but we would want to understand the inside of those proposed building improvements, is, would they all need to be constructed simultaneously, or can components be broken out? And if it can be, or even how long construction would take, then sometimes you'll sell bonds at a different point in time rather than selling all of the bonds up front and at once. I think our, the approach we're showing here probably shows a worst case scenario where you take out the entire financing on day one and start paying interest. And if you don't need the money all in that, you know, immediately, then you can break it out into separate series and look at selling half of the bonds in one year and maybe come back a year or two later and sell the balance. We used a 20-year repayment scenario just as a starting point for discussion, but the statutes give you a lot of flexibility in terms of the repayment period. So there's quite a few things that when we get into this, we can start showing you a number of different scenarios.
So that becomes, if you do something like that, interest rate levels and trends would pay, play into that whole scenario, wouldn't it?
Sure.
Because these interest rates aren't going to stay this low, in my mind, very long, much longer anyway.
Yeah, and obviously, if we're in a near record low interest rate environment, you may say, okay, we don't need all of the money at once. And we could run this calculation for you and show that if we delay, say, if we sell 8 million today and then come back two years and sell 8 million, and you're going to save interest expense on 8 million during that two-year window, but we'll calculate how much would interest rates need to go up before you regret that decision? So in other words, if interest rates went up a half a percent, are you still better off splitting it? If they go up three quarters of a percent, maybe you're better off selling it all at once. And then you can start looking at that data and say, okay, here's where we're at in terms of where interest rates are historically. And if it's not a, if it takes a very significant change in rates before you are worse off by splitting it, then that helps make that decision pretty easy.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
Greg, I've lived in Kansas for 25 years, and at my previous home, I could be pretty much assured my assessed value of my house would go up a little bit each year. Here, I swear they use the dartboard method, because I've got three properties here, and one, one year, two of them will go up 25%, another will drop 25%. So your data about a 1% increase here, is that just, I just picked the 1%? Do you have any basis for that?
Yeah, just for sake of starting the discussion.
That's what I assumed, because I think we're very random here.
Sure. And you're not alone. We've seen that in other counties and have heard that, you know, from the county assessor's office or appraiser's office, it, they're, especially you go back five, six, seven years where the economy was challenged and home sales were just not occurring, and maybe you had some homes where there were distressed sales that were, you know, we have a bank foreclose on a home and then they sell it, and then that shows up as a comparable, and it may have been sold at a 20% discount. So then the appraiser's saying, well, yeah, I don't know where the market is, so I don't know where to assess a home. And I have heard from some of the counties where they're saying that, you know, now it feels like, not hearing as many of those distressed sales for homes and maybe the real estate market's picking up and starting to maybe get a little more confidence in terms of, here's what that home is worth, and here's what the change is from year to year. But it really has made it a challenge in the last five to seven years, because it's just tough to predict. And so we'd want to be real careful on that if we were doing a property tax scenario and show you those sensitivity analysis, that if it, for some reason, it just stays at a flat or declining assessed valuation, here's what it would do to that mill levy. So, yeah, but no, we, we don't have, other than conversations with the communities in which we work and just kind of looking at some of the historical data and trying to make an informed guess, it really is nothing more than that in terms of just, it's an informed guess of what the future might hold, so.
So boils down to priority, prioritizing. What does this commission and other commissions then prioritize as far as what we do and how we approach it, in my mind? So, other questions from? Okay. Well, the action item here is then to set public hearing dates or meeting dates. Is that correct, Craig?
Yeah, our recommendation would be actually to authorize staff to kind of look at those dates, talk with the architect and the, you know, that would be there as well as Greg would be there, and set those dates. We wanted to get this presentation on this agenda so we could have at least two of those community meetings in early October, maybe late September, early October.
Okay, sounds great. That sounds like a good plan. Any preference, guys, for?
Yeah, if you have any specific, we talked about having one in the afternoon or, you know, like lunchtime or something, and one in the evening initially.
Okay, I think that'd be good.
And, but we'll, we'll come back and we'll shoot you some dates that we think would work once we get calendars coordinated.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, evenings are probably going to work better for most of the public.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we can do them both in the evening or however you'd like to structure it. We just talked about one in the lunchtime, people maybe want to come at lunchtime and for an hour or so.
Yeah, I think.
Possible.
Yeah, only if there's free food, though.
Well, we may have water, but.
That's fair. Well, and I think the timeframe, I don't think we want it to drag out. I think it needs to be a good crisp, maybe an hour, hour and 15 minute meeting at the most, so that it can be, you know, well structured, well organized, with the information being concise, to the point. And I think it's probably a good plan, too. That's probably what you think?
Yeah, plus, and of course, after, I don't know how you view these community type, what I've seen in the past, the way we've structured informational meetings, as I call them, is there, there's a somewhat of a presentation upfront on things. And then after that, it's almost kind of one-on, people can talk to different, you know, one-on-one and just in an informal way. So that's, that's how I envision it. We'll talk to Andy, who would be the main leader of that. So we'll work that out and let you know how we proceed, but.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I hope the discussion was helpful.
Very much, very helpful.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Greg.
Yes. What's that? Oh, okay. Right now?
No, no.
At the end, at the end, at the end. Okay. All right. Item B is consider approving a four-way stop at Pennsylvania Avenue and Walnut Street with crosswalks. I do have a request from Kathy Sargent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Sergeant, would you like to come up front, please, and let everybody know who you are and?
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome, and if you bring, if you bring the microphone down to you, just look at.
You want me to do an awful lot?
There you go. Well, we want the folks at home to hear that's.
Well, I don't necessarily need that. I'm down at Penn Terrace a lot, and that park across the street is fabulous. And it's got a walking path, and it's got benches. And a lot of these people over there that have walkers or rollers or scooters, they need that four-way stop because that's a high-traffic street, as well as the crosswalks. And we all don't move fast when we get older. And I'm just here to say that it needs to be a four-way stop with the crosswalks for the older people.
Okay.
And, I mean, it is really a nice park, and it's got a little walking path, and it's got benches. I like it.
It's beautiful. It is beautiful.
It's an asset to the community.
Yes. Okay.
And if it's not done, I can probably guarantee you that nobody will be going over there because of the health, the hazard, because people don't move old. These old people don't move fast, and there's a lot of them in that building. And they're slow-moving, just like me. And that's, that's what I had to say.
Well, we appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Okay. So Craig was, who's going to address?
Jerry.
Jerry, okay. Come on up, Jerry.
Good evening.
Mr. Wiseacre. What a cheap shot.
I, I think it's a great idea, and I suggest that we put the four-way stop in there.
Okay.
What she said.
Questions? Gary?
If those two say we should do it, then we should do it.
You got questions? Does that, there's, would that mean we'll paint a crosswalk in there, too, Jerry?
I think that's a great idea.
I mean.
Sure.
We would have, because I can see people.
They're going to use, they're not going to paint. They're going to use the thermoplastique so it doesn't deteriorate quickly.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to thermoplastique it, and so it is there.
Better than paint.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, well, further discussion, anybody?
No, there's, you know, it's a risk if you, if we don't put the stop sign there. We're leaving it open to the potential. You put the stop sign there, you've done all you can do to prevent it. If it happens, then there's nothing we could do. So, you know, whether there's enough pedestrian or, or vehicular traffic, I guess that's really beside the point. Now, we really need to look if, if the residents feel that they're at risk walking across the street, then that more or less justifies, and definitely needs to be marked. That'll draw more attention to the vehicles to see the marked crosswalk than anything. It's going to be awkward for a lot of people to stop going north and south.
Especially when you're not used to stopping.
So I think.
A lot of people running it for a while.
I think the marking of the crosswalk will draw more attention to the change than just trying to put a stop sign up. And you're going to put the stop bars also at the crosswalk, aren't you?
Yes.
That's, okay, entertain a motion, then, and we approve the four-way stop and crosswalk markings at Pennsylvania and Walnut Intersection.
You'll entertain a motion or you make a motion?
No, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to approve a four-way stop and crosswalk markings at Pennsylvania and Walnut Intersection.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Then moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item C, consider awarding agricultural lease for Track A at the airport.
Seems like we've got some good numbers this time.
We did. So this was the second go-around.
Right.
Of course, we did Track B, I believe, back in March, and saw significant increases in the numbers.
Boy, no kidding.
We're, we're getting great turnout on this. I think the five-year term moving to that, the farmers in the area really, really prefer that. We've seen some good numbers there, but in looking through everything, we are proposing that we award the lease to Ethan Seller and Seller Farms.
Looks like a no-brainer there.
Well, yeah, there's wide variety, I mean, a widespread. Yeah, there was, yeah. And the bids. And then this, so this is full-year payments, then? This is not semi-annual? No, there'll be semi-annual payments. Semi-annual payments? Yes. The first payment, so we won't see the first payment on this particular lease until 2018. We'll sign the, the documents if you guys so choose. Sign those, the lease would command, commence on October 1st, and I believe the first payment would be set for April 1st. Okay. With the second payment on September 30th each year.
Based on one year, the anniversary of the contract, right?
Yes.
Not calendar?
Right. So this is significantly more revenue than in years past? Significant. The lease that's expiring at the end of this month, it's $10,000 a year, in between $10,000 and $11,000, so it's.
That'd be a good percentage increase.
It is, it is, more than one.
Does this support the airport fund? Is that where it goes?
Yeah, it goes in the airport.
So that'll really help the airport fund?
Yeah, you know, we, we did put an increase in there from where we've been. This was a little bit more than what we forecasted.
Yeah. I think last year, didn't we have to compensate airport fund?
Yes. And this will take care of that? Should take care of it. Should. Would entertain a motion, then, that we approve the bid from Ethan Seller? Is that correct? For the $44,000 annual payment, total lease revenue would be $220,000 over five years. Correct? Okay, would be a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Ethan Seller for a five-year lease of Track A in the amount of $44,000 annual.
Second. Okay, then moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The extra item now is, what we'll consider is the request from Brian Williams for the city to participate in a cost-to-extend improvement to North Peter Pan Road beyond Levede Health's north entrance. Craig, entrance.
By the way, before Brian makes his request, I need to clarify, there was, I think there was some confusion on costs and dollars and exactly what option we were looking at. When I got the numbers yesterday from Sean Turner, we were looking at a project that extended the concrete well past the north entrance, which is what you see on the screen there, extends that concrete past. That was the original option back when, you know, they have that. Anyway, so we got a cost, and then it said add, you know, 20%, and that was $90,000. And so we thought we were going to be into the $542,000, which is what you see on the screen there. And of course, we had been in discussion talking about the participation at $450,000, split three ways. Well, that was the initial option, and one, I think, a lot of people thinking that's what we were going to do. But there was another option B, which brought that concrete back to just right at the north entrance, if you can see that on your map. And those costs were given out, you know, a long time ago. I give you, give you the dates, but that included all the costs, including in design and everything, at $450,000. Kelly can show that slide. There's a representation of bringing that back. So back, so I think the discussion we had in June with, with Brian and the commissioner, we were talking about this number. So the clarity is, if you want to extend the concrete to the original, or at least that design. it, it's that amount, $540-some thousand. If you wanna go to this option, it is that $450,000, and we'd split it the three ways, uh, that we have tentatively talked about.
And I, I wanna say that that's, it's my fault, the confusion. I wasn't on the same page with what option had ultimately been selected.
Well, and I was confused. We, yeah, I was confused.
We were all, we were all confused. We're not gonna blame Sean anyway. But we're, we're, that's why we stepped out, and that's the exact number that we came to. So, um, thanks for that, Craig. Before I get started, I, I wanna thank, um, the staff, you know, Craig, since he's become the city manager, been very supportive of Lebet Health. Kelly, you know, I've, she's probably wanted to pull her hair out a couple of times the last couple of years, but she's been so, you know, supportive. David Cowan and all the paramedics, um, EMTs. Your, your fire chief, Sean Wallace, has done a great job. And Chief Jerry Harrison, thanks for all you guys coming out to help us on the open house and the grand opening. Thank you, guys, for being there on August 19th. Mayor, thanks for your comments. I've quoted you a couple of times. You may, you may read it in a, in a press release that went out yesterday. And then Don Cushing, uh, you know, did a good job. You're building inspector, so you, you know, kudos to your entire staff, because we pushed people hard. Everybody said it'd take us two years to build that facility. We did it. You know, I remember you telling me, some people from the South laughed that we would get it done, and how much money we'd spend, and, and we were able to get that done. But it was not without maybe pushing on some ordinances and, and things. So thank you for your support and your staff's support.
I heard a report on NPR Tuesday morning about it.
Yeah. If somebody ever interviews you and hands you a microphone, be careful what you say.
Was that, was that the guy that was there from NPR?
Yeah, talking to everybody. And, you know, we're all just trying to have a good time. And, uh, and so I had to, I had to talk to the state director of the USDA. I was like, yeah, maybe I shouldn't have said that. You know, but anyway. Um, he, I think he, he bailed, he bailed us out. So Craig's right. Craig, Craig is, uh, come in at a tough time, 'cause we're coming near the end, and so he doesn't have the context of the last, really, I would say even before I got here. I don't have the context of the year prior of what this community went through, looking at the closure of a hospital. So I kinda went back, and I had to reflect. The first time we talked about the road, if you'll remember, you guys were trying to decide early last year, you know, what roads do we do? Can we, can we do this K, with KDOT? You weren't really in control of the, the letting, you know, process, the bidding process. It started out, I think, my memory was it was gonna be $700,000 from the state, $700,000 from the city, and it was gonna be a $1.4 million project. So we met with Kelly, um, Jennifer at the time, and, um, Mickey over at City Hall on July 14th, 2016, and started talking about, you know, what could we do? Could we get the road extended all the way in front of, you know, what will be someday, I hope, you know, inpatient beds for this community? But it certainly is a hospital in terms of it has hospital services. And, you know, Mickey and Kelly and everybody was supportive. None of us have an overflow of money. You know, none of us. The county, the city, Lebet Health, we're all trying to work together. So, uh, we kinda tabled it, 'cause we had so much going on at that time. So on November 24th, 2016, we had another meeting, uh, brought Sean together with Kelly, some others. Commissioner McManus was there, um, Charlotte Schmidt from the county, and we, 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 we looked at different costs and different options. And that was when, um, extending it a little bit further, if you can go back, Kelly, to the first one, that was the $577,000 proposal. And so at that meeting on November 24th, we decided, you know, do we really need that added cost? We asked Sean, could you go back, and if we just eliminate it, and you'll see on your paper, and I'm sorry that we don't have it for everyone else, but we just X-ed out that, um, section from the north, our north entrance up to the tapered lane. And that ended up, if you'll take us back, that ended up taking us down to around this $450,000 target. So since then, I've been running around, trying to go, if we do this, will you do this? At the initial meeting, Lebet Health, that second number that I gave you, the $134,000, Mickey was very gracious to say, well, we can extend it and get at least one of your entrances. And I said, okay, I'll pay $100,000. I don't know where I'll get it, if you'll do that. And again, he can't, he can't commit anything without your approval. We all knew that sitting in the room. But conceptually, he thought that was something that, that, um, his commissioners would support. And then we, as we continued to talk, we thought, you know, really, we've got a beautiful hospital facility. We shouldn't ask David's, uh, you know, paramedics and EMTs to jeopardize their safety trying to turn in a narrow lane, so that northern entrance is our ambulance entrance. So predominantly, our patients will enter on the southern entrance. You're gonna have, you know, an MRI and a PET scanner trying to navigate, um, that entrance. So we thought, well, it's probably prudent that we do the right thing, and at least extend it past that north entrance. So we agreed conceptually to how we might share in that cost. The county at that time was good for $100,000. We were good for $100,000. We met then on June 27th. You did a good job hiring a, a city manager that said, protecting your resources, how about we split it three ways? And, uh, Mayor Meyer was there at that meeting. And I don't know that anybody ever fully said, yeah. I said yes. The hospital, I, I think it's a prudent thing to do. We gotta get it done. I'll, I'll do $150,000. The county, um, um, of course, Commissioner McManus, like each of you, you can't go to a meeting and bind the other two commissioners. He's, he's talked to Commissioner York, and I, I believe Commissioner Brown, and conceptually, um, has agreed to support us. Potentially, I have to go Monday. Based on this meeting, I have to go and make a similar request, um, of the county. And there's no guarantee that they'll approve it. But hopefully, they would approve $150,000. We would be $150,000. And then, like Craig said, the city would be $150,000, and we'd split it, um, three ways. And, uh, the only thing he asked at that meeting, and we had discussed it back in November, and at that time, conceptually, I think, um, Mr. Webb was okay with it. But again, we have a new city manager, and so out of respect and deference to him, I hope he can support it too, was, and I don't, I don't know roads. I don't understand roads. All I know is I need them, and our patients and citizens need them. You know, would the, would the city accept ownership of the new, you know, road, the new portion of the road? And, um, the county would continue to do snow removal, and would the city accept, um, ownership of the road? And, um, that, I think, um, you know, was, was what I was gonna go and ask of the, of the county, subject to whatever we approve here tonight or, or disprove. So my request, and then I, since I'm here, I have a second one that's tangentially related, but one that you'll at least vote on tonight. Staff may wanna work on the second one. Could we, could we, for public safety, for the safety of our paramedics, the city, everybody, could we share in this $450,000? That does include some contingency money, includes inspections, and includes design fees. And that should be a breakout on, on there.
So that it's on there, and that was the question this afternoon, was...
Right. And that was a misunderstanding, and, and, you know, like I told Craig, and you guys saw that, uh, part of that conversation. I was in a super hurry today. I would never dump on the city. You guys have been good to us. So my assumption, I'm not comfortable going back to the county and asking for more. Just because of, you know, every time they do something for us, they, they, they've already made a commitment to do other things for Coffeyville Regional Medical Center. You know, uh, and so we're, we're fortunate. We have two hospitals trying to work for the benefit of the county. So they have two hospitals that they have to try to, to support. So if I ask for more, I'm gonna imagine that'll cost them more to support Coffeyville Regional Medical Center. However, we built a brand-new facility. You know, I, I think it's apples and oranges, but that's, that's, you know, for the county to, to work out. I think that's it. Do you have anything to add?
I was just, yeah, I was gonna add, one, that it, now we got it straight, the numbers and the option we're looking at, and if you're comfortable with carrying that concrete street there, I mean, I would recommend we take ownership of the street as well. And one thing I like about taking ownership of this street is it's a concrete street. As you know, they met, lay last. The life cycle of a concrete street is significantly longer than a paved, paved street. So, and with the county continues snowplow removal, it's not a, you know, that, that's good cooperation from the way I see it. So I have no issue from a staff point about accepting that, and taking that, and getting that, that road down. And especially since we've agreed on a split.
Just, you know, the taper is asphalt, that's why I kept walking. So it's concrete, and I know you'll want a definitive agreement when I go Monday, and you're welcome to go with me. Um, I know you'll need an agreement, and Commissioner McManus understands that.
Say, how's that work legally, Jeff? I mean, would they have to, would there be a memorandum of understanding? How, how would that all work?
I mean, that's what I figured, but I don't know if you need anything more than an, I don't know if you need an inter-local agreement, or...
You know, I said if I just voted to do it, otherwise you need an inter-local agreement. It has to go to AG's office.
Commissioner McManus is expecting me to call him tonight. I think he'll do, in respect, whatever. 'Cause he, he said he'll do whatever. We're in the city. We were annexed into the city, right, so it's, it's really contiguous to our, our property.
And I will say, I did talk to Commissioner McManus as well this afternoon. He called to support this project.
So is this, the city limits is on the east side of Peter Pan Road, right there?
Yes, they didn't take the road in. Once you get to Orshlands, then it's not in the city anymore, the road.
So then, would we be relocating the city limits to the west side?
If they went through the process to actually take that road in, then it would.
It seems to me like there's some other procedural...
But you could also do just an agreement with the county to maintain it, and not actually, I mean, it depends on how you wanna do it.
So I, I can't speak for our neighbor, but I don't think our neighbor across the street wants to be annexed in to the city. So I think they would take exception to that. So I, I would like the easiest, most expedient methodology. I kinda like what Jeff said.
Well, when you look at Peter Pan Road and the traffic, anything we do is definitely gonna be an advantage. When you look at the location of the, uh, industrial park, and the access into the industrial park as it is now.
So the, the traffic count, this is of April 29th, it's, it's more than I think any of us really realize until you stand out there and look at people going, trying to get around the construction now, and we're working on that. Fifty-six hundred cars drive, uh, southbound, I'm sorry, northbound, and then 7,600 cars drive southbound per, per day.
Wow.
And I thought, I think that's a per day. Is that per day?
Twenty-four hour.
Yes, twenty-four hour period. And really, it's a 60/40 directional. Um, the percentage of trucks medium is 2%, heavy trucks is 6%, so there's a fair amount of truck traffic. And then the peak times really are around 10:00 AM to probably 3, 4:00 PM. So I think a lot of people use it around the lunchtime to get around to Walmart and run errands, and, and, uh, you know, that's, that's a whole separate. You know, I've talked to some people, and they think, they think, you know, the city drug their feet getting it done, and why didn't they get it done sooner? I really think, in talking to Craig and staff, it was really more controlled by the, the state, and...
We just blame it on you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
At least I can count on you for your support.
But it, it could provide us better access into our industrial park as we look at extending it north, instead of going to San Antonio, coming around.
Stop here for now, 'cause we have known projects. We still have two and a half acres there that hopefully, you know, maybe we can develop and partner on, and other health, you know, make that a healthcare complex, and then extend it in conjunction with those projects, you know. Don't, don't, I hate to use the word waste that money, but don't. None of us have an extra $100,000 laying around.
There is a planned, another planned access to that industrial park from Oak Street, where the city bought road, street right of way, uh, off Oak Street that goes into the industrial park that has been purchased by the city for future use. Isn't that right, Jeff?
I really don't recall.
Okay. I believe, I believe so. That, yeah. I believe there, there was a plan to do that at some point in time.
If you look at delivery trucks from 75, to be able to come in off of Peter Pan Road and exit, it would really, I think IAP owns that west portion that was used by the pipeline, that, you know, a company coming in, if you look at development, develop the west portion and have access direct in, would be much more attractive than depending on going down and getting on Laurel and going through the industrial park. And then with the soccer fields, also, uh, the amount of traffic there to improve. You know, I think we need to look at our master plan, and, or work with the county to see how we can keep extending it north, either in, in sections, or, or some way that we can get a, a, a better direction on the future, instead of just saying, okay, we're here, that's done, and, and we live. You know, we're, we're gonna have to look at bringing industry in, and looking at, at that route, that could really enhance that west property to develop a lot better than, you know, access with the three-lane, concrete, you know, it'd be a good selling point to a business coming to town. So, you know, I, I think anything we can do, wherever how much money we have, if we could put into that, then, you know, you know, if, if we could go the full length, then that would be even better.
So, uh, Brian, on, you know, the, that, I think you said the meeting was June 27th. Well, not at that meeting. I thought that was the agreement that we had, that we thirded.
Pretty much.
Third.
Third.
Everybody would do a third.
Yes, and I, I would put a limit. So on the 450, my recommendation would be that you would approve something like, um, we'd each split it a third. The maximum the county would be is 150. The city would be 150, and Lebet Health would be 150.
That's where I was headed with...
Yeah, and then contingent upon, um, some kind of acceptance of ownership through a memorandum agreement, or something that... My, my only concern, and I don't know, Sean, you can, you know, if it turns out to be $460,000, I think us and the city will have to work that out, and I don't mind sharing in that equally if there's a cost overrun. I can't imagine there would be...
I believe this is gonna be the worst-case scenario. It'd be something very...
Can you say that louder?
There we go.
Give him on TV.
I believe this will be the worst-case scenario. It'd have to be something very unusual for it to, for it to go over that amount.
Glad you were here.
There's a note, Sean, there is a note on this about construction easement cost and public utility relocation.
Yes.
Is that?
I think all we will need is a temporary easement.
Which we've already signed.
Yeah, well, on the other side of the road, we may need a temporary easement, and that, that would be included in those costs. It was, it was pretty reasonable what we had to do last year.
I gave my easement for free.
Brian, we have some other city streets that need attention. Would you like to participate in doing those too?
Fifth Street, yeah.
You know, you guys have been supportive. So every person that comes in that facility, I do tell them that CT scanner was because of this city and your taxpayers and that portable x-ray. And, uh, in our first month, we did see 453 patients, and we have saved lives, working with your EMS, so thank you.
That's awesome.
Craig, budget-wise, where are you looking at? 'Cause this is an unbudgeted expense for this, this year. And we know from our previous discussions that the budget is tight. What are your initial thoughts?
Right, we, I'd been talking about this, and I was already called back into June, when we first, I first talked about it anyway, is, uh, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, or Mike, uh, we were talking about taking it out of an existing fund, i.e. the Economic Development Fund, for, this is considered economic development. So that's where we've talked about taking it from. And there's funds there to do that.
I did budget it for 2018, out of the Economic Development Fund. Now, with that said, if you so choose to do it, I am talking to Craig about maybe creating and, and handling this as a change order to the existing KDOT project. And with that, we do have an option with the bonds that are outstanding, uh, to repurpose part of that.
Including the bond.
So we could slide it over there as well. Yeah, that's, I mean, and I'm good with the project. I just wanna make sure that we're thoughtful about how we do finance.
Yeah.
Again, and unbudgeted.
Yeah.
We don't use the word creative in finance, but...
I budgeted this for 18. For 18, but that, I mean, I mean, that's really... We wouldn't expend any funds probably until 18. And that's why you do the change order? Yeah. Okay. I'm good with that. That'd be, that's even better. Yeah.
The 250 plus or minus thousand we got for the, uh, for... The two-hundred-and-fifty plus or minus thousand we got for the four-point-two mil, we levied for the possibility of a three-million-dollar bond for healthcare. Is that money still there that, that could be used for, for this project, or has that been consumed somewhere else?
We've needed to consume that to support the ongoing capital projects that we had. As we went through this budget cycle, as, as we explained, we, we had some struggles and hurdles that we had to overcome. And so, that's had been used within the, the general fund to support those projects.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I know I expressed my opinion. When we generate revenue, we're telling the public where it's gonna be used for a purpose. It was for two reasons, and it wasn't, one of them wasn't to go into a general fund to help out a shortfall. You know, we lose our credibility when we say we're raising a mil levy for a purpose or raising money for a certain purpose, and then we spend it elsewhere. What's done is done.
Right, correct.
You know, I think that's something we really need to, to get and get a grip, grip on our budget process.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion then that we approve, I mean, I'm good for capping it at, at our contribution at a hundred-and-fifty thousand bucks. And then if there's anything extra that comes up, I can come talk to it.
How are we gonna phrase this, though?
Well, that's, let me take a stab at it.
Please do.
I wasn't about to.
I was thinking about that before. I would move that we approve up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to lengthen Peter Pan Road beyond Labette Health's north entrance per the estimate or quote that, whatever you call this, estimate.
Three-lane option, three-lane hospital extension option?
Yeah, three-lane option as, as this, and this is quoted.
In, in partnership with the other team?
In partnership with, up to, in partnership with Labette Health and Montgomery County.
Can, can your motion include the city accepting that improved portion of ownership, subject to a memorandum?
I'm not sure ownership's the right word because it's a right-of-way, which, annexation may be the right word. I'll work that out with the county council if that's right.
I just need to be able to say on Monday to them that you've accepted that.
Responsibility.
Take responsibility, less snow, less snow removal. Commissioner McManus said they'll continue to do snow removal, less snow removal.
Well, that can be a part of the memorandum.
Were they asking for maintenance? Is that it? They want the city to be responsible for maintenance?
Yeah, I don't understand all the road stuff, because I said...
I think it will require annexation, to be honest.
I just wondered if there's not some sort of...
Subject to their agreement.
So, if we want, if we have to do the maintenance beyond snow removal, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't want to be doing...
We have to annex it.
We'd have to annex it. We wouldn't want to.
Got all that, Mike?
So, we would wanna phrase that, like I had it, subject to, Jeff, an agreement reached with Montgomery County as far as maintenance? I know...
I would just say, do your one-third thing and, and let city staff work the rest out.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go. That's even better.
We're okay with that. I mean, if you need to...
So, it's top and second, and so I can rephrase the motion, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so, I'd make a motion then that we appropriate up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in partnership with Montgomery County and Labette Health for extending Peter Pan Road beyond Labette Health's north entrance, north entrance, period. What would you add?
With, with the city staff to work out the agreement with the county as far as taking over...
With staff working in conjunction with Montgomery County to work out some sort of maintenance or other agreements as required to complete the process. Okay?
I wanna hear Mike read it back.
You gotta read that one back? It's on video.
I will, I will review, review the video at seven-oh-two. I've noted the time.
Okay, so there's the motion.
You are gonna read it back, aren't you? Serious?
No.
You know, you don't make a motion depending on a video.
Okay.
Now, you said north of the, of the, of the north entrance. I thought it was everything in front, you were talking about.
So, that's the, that's the north, northernmost entrance?
North of the north entrance.
I don't...
That's all you're talking about, too, the short... Four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for that little...
Well, and the tapered, yeah, it seems expensive, doesn't it, Jeff?
I thought it was the whole thing was four-hundred and fifty.
Roads are ridiculous.
No, so from the, so it's the gray portion plus the black in the photograph?
Well, that's what I had.
Yeah.
Well, the gray portion's south of the north entrance, not north of it.
Yeah, so it's from, so it's from the south entrance extending it, because the current project stops where the white stops.
But his, his motion just said north of the north entrance.
Well, extend...
If you make your motion refer to the shortened length plan, it goes into that diagram.
Told you I'd have to try.
You did a good job, Mayor. These guys are just being critical.
Wait, wait, it is north of the north entrance.
It is north of the north entrance. The tapered part is, but those other two sections are south of the north entrance.
Well, I should've said from Main Street or from...
I thought the two gray areas and the black part were all in it.
Put the other diagram up there again.
That gray area and the black is the project.
The four-fifty?
There's what we're doing.
No, no, we're going to the, to the orange line, orange line from the...
So, yeah, I guess you should...
So, you're, you're going from the white, the white right there...
It's from the city limits.
From the city, from where the city stopped.
From the city limits to just beyond the north entrance.
Proposal to extend the scope of the project from the end of the base bid work to the length that's illustrated in the shortened length diagram.
See, this proposal here says three-lane section at ending at north entrance, City of Independence on, basically from US seventy-five and Peter Pan Road improvements.
It's a three-lane option to extend it, and that's how it's labeled, to extend from where the city stopped.
It's too bad there's not a, like, some sort of number on this.
The city limits.
Well, why don't you maybe refer to it dated five-seventeen, two thousand seventeen, in that the date?
The proposal dated, estimate dated.
The scope of the work, identify again, that proposal dated.
Isn't that what it is?
How about that?
That's just the date. It was printed. It, it puts that date on there, whatever it was printed, because when I printed it today, it put today's date. So, it was from the email from May...
This is...
Well, why don't we establish some numbers on...
Here's, here's, as, I'd make a motion, because it's never, you didn't, nobody seconded, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'd make a motion that we approve a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Yeah. There it is. Okay, that's good. In conjunction with, in partnership with Labette Health and Montgomery County on alternate number three, prepared by Trans Systems. Am I going too fast, Mike? You got it. Dated five-seventeen, two thousand... That's on, on here.
I know, but that's just the date it was printed. It was actually submitted to us May eighth.
But can't we use this date to supersede it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
For a three-lane section...
All right, hang on. So, what, what was the date?
Five-seventeen.
Five-seventeen seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen. For a three-lane improvement ending on Peter Pan Road from the road improvements, how far up does that go? From the geometric road improvement ending point north, how's that? That, that gets it, doesn't it? All right, so, from, from the geometric road improvements... What? North, as presented, per this. Yeah. This is way too difficult.
Yeah.
You could just say the shortened length.
Yeah. So, we, I got the partnership in there. I got all the requisites, right?
And then, well, then you also need to authorize city staff...
The city staff to work with the county on, in finalizing the... Maintenance agreements, et cetera.
Yeah.
Any other appropriate agreements with the road.
You let us know when you're ready to read that back, Mike. Oh, you're not cheating there, are you, Kelly?
She tied a fest, Mike, right.
Mayor Meyer made... Mayor Meyer made a motion, I got that from Jerry. Made a motion to approve a hundred-and-fifty thousand in partnership with Labette Health in Montgomery County for alternate three dated five-seventeen, two thousand seventeen, for a three-lane improvement ending on Peter Pan Road from the geometric road improvement ending point as presented and authorize city staff to work with the county on finalizing future maintenance.
Okay, up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand.
To prove, up to?
Yeah. That's what we talked about.
Does that sound good to you, Leonard?
So, somebody second that quick.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Could you repeat that? Could you repeat your motion?
I'm voting yes. All those in favor, say aye. Say a yes. Aye, so we're good. There we go.
So, thank you very much. And then my, this is not something to vote on, but I just, in full disclosure, feedback from the community, you know, the, the, the community suffered a hurtful loss when the hospital closed, and important blue signs came down, directional signs. So, feedback from people in the community have been, you know, when are we gonna put the hospital signs back up? And even if, you know, by statute, we have to qualify it as ER, you know, with a sign underneath it, I'd like to work with Craig and David and Kelly and try to, to see how we can do that. So, I'm gonna, next week, I think I'll give Craig a break tomorrow, but next week, start maybe working on that with him. And I hope, I hope you guys would, you know, support that at the point that he might ask that. And then, again, thank you again for all your support, and I promise I'll try not to be back for a while. I will offer this. I'd like to get maybe ninety days under our belt and then come and tell you, you know, the finances, the operations. We, we've completed our audit, you know, the hospital's strong, and, and we need a strong community. You need us to be strong, and we work together and continue to try to fill up that industrial park and grow Independence, Kansas, so...
That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have city board minutes. There's the May third tree board. There is the July twenty-fifth Recreation Commission, and then Planning Commission, August first Planning Commission, and then the August sixteenth Recreation Commission Board. Commission comments, anybody, Leonard?
Treasure reports, are they about caught up, or where are we on?
I'm working with John State next Tuesday on it, so I'll have an update on it.
Have we heard anything on our KDOT grants that we applied for? Has KDOT awarded anything that we know?
Henry, I haven't heard anything new other than, I mean, fire truck, for example?
No.
Are you talking about the clip projects?
Road projects.
Those clip projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did not get the money for this go-around on them.
There's another one we're waiting on, right, Sean?
No, that, that did include them all.
Oh, that did include them all?
There was, there was very much money from KDOT this year.
They were all denied. One, one thing.
The, the projects weren't denied, we just, they weren't granted to us with the limited funds. When can we reapply for those? Is it twenty-nineteen, or we have to wait till twenty-twenty?
I think in twenty-eighteen, next year, they'll have another application process for, for twenty-twenty-one.
Hopefully, they'll have some money available finally, because they haven't had their money.
For the, the section on, on Main Street from Ninth to Tenth Street, it keeps getting worse. Should we look at an alternate funding for replacement of that without the geometric? Just, we don't want it to get as bad as the end of West Main was. And it's, it seems like since the West Main project was completed, we did some patching, but there's more holes coming evident, and, you know, I, I think if we just keep waiting for the grant, if we're not looking at funding or starting to set money aside, we're gonna be caught off guard again. And that, West Main was a, was, was a problem with visitors into town.
Okay, all right.
You know, I might make one comment. I, I can't remember when it was, two weeks ago, somebody grabbed me downtown and said, "The parking lot there behind Big Cheese is embarrassing. You can't see any of the lines. You can't tell where to park." And as they were talking to me, I just typed it in my phone and sent it to Craig and said, "I'm getting a complaint about the parking lot behind the Big Cheese." Then I see the two, the same guy like forty-eight hours later, and he's coming toward me, and I'm thinking he's gonna complain again, but he said, "I don't know how you got that done so fast, but it looks amazing." So, I really appreciate that. However that happened, that was incredible.
Thanks to the street crew, got that done ASAP. It was great.
Thank you so much. Nice to have those kind of comments.
All right, I don't have any public concerns. This is the only one, correct, Mike?
Yeah, and then she already spoke.
And then executive sessions, we do have one. How long, you suppose?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. I'll make a motion to go into, that I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city, with an attorney for the City of Independence, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship per the statute. The subject to be discussed is a potential litigation matter. Opening of the meeting will resume. We'll be back here in ten minutes, Mike. After, let's, let's take a minute or two so we can...
So, it's, it's, I got seven-eighteen right now. What time would you like to return?
Seven, seven-thirty. That way, we can go to the little boys' room before we meet.
And who is going into executive session?
Would be commissioners, city manager, city attorney.
And Terry, and maybe, and John as well. You can give John, anyway, those two.
Terry, and who else?
John. I can't remember his last name.
Ed.
I mean, Ed.
I say John, okay. And Ed Sykes, okay? Would there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, we are back in open session. Would entertain a motion then that we adjourn for the evening.
So, moved.
Second.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sign our papers and go home and get something to eat.